Okay. We call the order, the City of Torrington Planning and Zoning Commission meeting as of August 20th, 2025. Attendance by Zoom and in person in City Hall, Room 218, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Instruction for Zoom are available online on www.torringtonct.org/zoom. In there you'll find a link for the Zoom meeting. In addition, if you need to call in by phone, the phone is 1-646-558-8656. Meeting ID is 795-950-7035. The passcode is 907148. In attendance tonight, we have from Zoom or through Zoom Donovan Riley, Stali Eras, Tom Tellman. In person here is Diane Carroll, Donna, I'm stuck.
Greco.
Greco, sorry. Myself, Greg Perisino, and with us is also our City Planner, Jeremy Leifert. So the first business, order of business is minutes of approval. So we have the July 16th minutes, and I would entertain a minute, or excuse me, a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so moving on, we have a public hearing set. And that public hearing is a special exception, SE 25-25-5. The location is 11 Main Street. The applicant is Torrington Main Street Development Corporation. The proposal is to install a handicap accessible apartment on the first floor at 11 Main Street rear entrance. For seated for this public hearing will be myself, Greg Perisino, Donovan Riley, Donna Greco, and two alternates will be Diane Carroll and Tom Tellman. All right? So.
Stone's not seated.
Right. So I guess is the applicant in attendance? Okay, would you come forward and?
I gotta read the.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. Well, that's okay, he can wait. You can wait. I'm sorry, Donna. Read the announcement.
We have Torrington Planning and Zoning Commission legal notice. The Planning and Zoning Commission has scheduled a public hearing on the following application on Wednesday, August 20th, 2025, in the City Hall Auditorium, Room 218, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut, at 7:00 PM for 11 Main Street by Torrington Main Street Development Corporation to install first-floor handicap accessible apartment in a downtown district zone. Copies of the above-mentioned application and plans are on file in the Land Use Office, City Hall, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Greg Mealy, Chair, Planning and Zoning Commission, dated in Torrington, Connecticut, the 6th and 13th days of August 2025.
Okay, thank you, Donna. Okay, so is the applicant in attendance? Okay, so we will acknowledge that we have received the certificate of mailings.
Yep.
We have them in our possession, so if you would, why don't you explain what you're up to?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, the sign was posted from the tender.
Yeah, sign was posted on Main Street.
That's right.
Vincent Capelletti, Torrington Main Street Development. Well, we renovated, it was got renovation of all of 11 Main Street, and we had the ability to put a handicap apartment in the rear of the building. I would never place one in front of a building, and I don't think they should be allowed on Main Street, you know, but we did have the space. It was an empty retail that we actually used for our office during construction, and basically we just split it in half. So it doesn't affect the retail side, the retail store will still be a full store, and we're providing, I mean, for someone who maybe, you know, can't make the steps.
Yeah.
They would have, you know, we did 17 apartments. It would be mandatory, I guess, if it was new construction, it would be mandatory. I don't know if they would enforce it on a building, but if you have the ability to do it without affecting the Main Street, well, why not? You know, so that's why we put.
Okay. So does any of the commissioners have any questions?
So does it need to be ADU compliant at all, or no? Like doorways and all that?
It doesn't say in our regulations, but it's a good point to make for our, for a special exception approval.
Yeah, we were, you know, I wouldn't say wheelchair, but we're handicap. We put everything's one level, entry level from the street. So it's, it wouldn't be really like a wheelchair situation because it's behind the building anyway, you know, but, you know, for somebody who just can't make the stairs.
There's no steps at all?
No, no steps, pretty much, you know, while one little, one little rise from the driveway into the city.
And there's, by knowledge, there's no parking in the back for this building?
We would give, there is, well, we do own part of the parking lot.
Okay.
But I don't provide parking for residential, but I would provide parking possibly for that person.
Okay.
Because we have, we have about five, six spaces back there. I give one to each one of the retails, and we have four retails. And, you know, so if there was, you know, somebody that needed it, I can provide a space for them in the back.
Okay.
You know, but I normally don't provide, I rent apartments, not parking spaces.
And this unit will have laundry hookups as well?
Well, the inside, the main building, they have laundries.
Okay.
You know, upstairs, we have, we have actually one laundry on each floor, yep.
But they're upstairs?
They're upstairs.
There's not going to be an extra?
No.
For this particular unit?
No.
Any other commissioners have any questions? If hearing none, I'll go to the public, and if who would like to speak in favor of this application can come up, state your name and address, and tell us what you think. Okay.
Anybody on Zoom?
Anyone on Zoom who might be attending? I don't see anybody outside the commissioners, but, okay. So seeing none, I'll ask if there are anybody in attendance here or on Zoom who want to speak against this proposal. They would come up, state their name and address, and tell us their objection. Okay. Seeing none, I will ask the applicant if he has any other things he'd like to say, or how we might want to close it, from his point of view.
No, not really. I mean, we provided one on 104 Main Street also.
Yep.
Again, not front of, not front of building, rear side of building that was available, so we put a apartment in there, and, you know, they're not really handicapped, it's a young guy, but it's available.
Okay. So I'll go to Jeremy and let him read in his report.
Vincent Capelletti, DBA, Torrington Main Street Development Corp., has filed site plan, special exception application number SE 25-5 for 11 Main Street, accessers map 117, block 013, lot 001, to convert a former ground-floor commercial space in the rear of the building at 11 Main Street into a 400-square-foot ADA accessible apartment. In addition, a small nine-by-nine outside patio area will be provided with the apartment. The property is currently owned by Torrington Main Street Development Corp., is 0.19 acres in area and is located in the DD Downtown District Zone. The primary use for commercial space in the ground floor and residential in the upper floors is allowed as of right by site plan approval under zoning regulations section 3.1, table of uses, and 6.8 multifamily residences. Ground-floor residential dwelling units are allowed by special exception approval under zoning regulations section 3.1, subsection 1.30 multifamily residences, and 6.8.17 downtown district mixed use. Under this section, the commission may approve "ground-level residential units", in quotes, "in the rear of a building not directly fronting a public way, street, or park", closed quotes. The review of this application is guided by the regulations mentioned above and the general special exception review standards of section 8.2 of the zoning regulations. A floor plan has been submitted titled "Renovations to 11 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut", by John Martin Associates, Torrington, Connecticut, dated May 31st, 2023, one sheet. A review of past information on this property show that site plan number 719 was approved in June 2005 to permit a barber shop in a former retail space, and site plan number 1006 was approved in April 2011 to permit a restaurant in a former hair salon space. Staff has previously met with the applicant and discussed this application prior to this meeting. In reviewing the plans and documents submitted, I have the following comments. One, due to gaps in approval history for the current commercial tenants on the ground floor of the building, I recommend that the commission acknowledge in this approval that the following uses are approved and compliant. 11 Main Street for a restaurant use, rolled ice cream. 15 Main Street for general office use, former served pro office currently vacant. 17 Main Street for general office use, express employment professionals. And 21 Main Street for a bakery use, Ampatino Bakery. Future changes in these uses shall require planning and zoning approvals per the zoning regulations. Two, the proposed location of the ADA accessible apartment is in the rear of the 15 Main Street commercial space and will be divided from the street frontage commercial space. Three, I recommend that a waiver of submission of an engineered site plan be approved in accordance with section 8.4.4 of the regulations, as no exterior work is proposed. Four, the current, oh, I'm gonna strike four, that was copied over from a previous, I don't know why I left it in there. Five, I recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission find that the proposed use and location is reasonably protective of the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the project area and the citizens of the City of Torrington for the granting of a special exception approval in accordance with section 8.2.2.2B of the regulations. Other staff comments. Assistant City Planner, Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner, submitted the following comments on July 10th, 2025. Wetlands, there are no regulated wetlands activities that require wetlands review for this proposal. This constitutes a favorable report from the Inland Wetlands Commission. Landscaping is NA. Lighting, new lighting must comply with section 5.17 of the zoning regulations, which requires full cutoff lighting with no light trespass onto neighboring properties. Noncompliant fixtures include new decorative hanging fixtures in the storefront entryways and rear LED angled light. Modifications shall be made to these, to make these fixtures compliant. Signage, any new signage shall comply with section 5.15 of the zoning regulations. All storefronts in the building are getting new signs and should confirm with the Land Use Office if they require sign permits. Conservation, this application was not referred to the Conservation Commission for review. Blood plane specimens, significant trees, and other are all labeled NA. Architectural Review Committee, this application was not referred to the ARC for review. Any further exterior facade or sign changes to the property will require ARC review. Historic Review, Mark McCarron, Executive Director of the Torrington Historical Society, submitted the following comments on July 8th, 2025. The work done on the porches, windows, and storefronts meets historic preservation standards, well done. Positive referrals on this application were submitted without additional comment by the Economic Development Director, Torrington Area Health District, City Engineer, Police Traffic, Fire Marshal, WPCA, and the building official. No comments were received on this application by the Torrington Aquarium Water Company or Connecticut DOT. Conclusion, I recommend that the commission approve special exception 25-5 to convert former commercial space to the rear of 11 Main Street, the rear portion of 15 Main Street, to a 400-square-foot ADA accessible dwelling unit, subject to the following conditions. One, per comments of Assistant City Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus on July 10th, 2025, the applicant shall address any noncompliant lighting prior to department sign-off on a certificate of occupancy. Two, the Planning and Zoning Commission finds that the proposed use and location is reasonably protective of the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the project area and the citizens of the City of Torrington for the granting of a special exception approval. Three, the commission acknowledges and approves the following commercial ground-floor uses on this property. 11 Main Street for a restaurant use, rolled ice cream. 15 Main Street for general office use, former served pro office currently vacant. 17 Main Street for general office use, business, or express employment professionals. And 21 Main Street for a bakery use, Ampatino Bakery. Future changes in these uses shall require planning and zoning approvals per the zoning regulations. Four, a certificate of special exception shall be filed with the city clerk in accordance with local regulations and state statutes. I just noticed that I forgot one item that we might have to just write in, and that is waiver of the site, the site plan.
Yeah, waiver of site plan.
Yep. Yeah, it's, it is under number three in the, here. Yeah.
Following this?
This is number three?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So at this point, do the commissioners have any questions of Jeremy?
No.
No?
Good here.
Okay. All right, so at this point, I could declare, it is 7:15, and I declare this public hearing closed, and we'll give you a decision momentarily.
I'd like to make a motion to approve special exception SE-25-5 for the location 11 Main Street to create a ground-floor residential ADA accessible apartment in a downtown district zone with the following conditions. One, per comments of Assistant City Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus on July 10th, 2025, the applicant shall address any noncompliant lighting prior to department sign-off on a certificate of occupancy. Two, the Planning and Zoning Commission finds that the proposed use and location is reasonably protective of the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the project area and the citizens of the City of Torrington for the granting of a special exception approval. Three, the commission acknowledges and approves the following commercial ground-floor uses on this property. 11 Main Street for a restaurant use, rolled ice cream. 15 Main Street for general office use, former served pro office currently vacant. 17 Main Street for general office use, express employment professionals. And 21 Main Street for a bakery use, Ampatino Bakery. Future changes in these uses shall require planning and zoning approvals per the zoning regulations, and also recommend a waiver of submission of an engineered site plan be approved in accordance with section 8.4.4 of the regulations, as no exterior work is proposed. Four, a certificate of special exception shall be filed with the city clerk in accordance with local regulations and state statutes.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
Second.
Diane Carroll, second. All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, passes, thank, good luck.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, next order of business. Yep. So under all business, we have nothing to discuss, so moving on to item six, new business. A, Site Plan 1345, location Cory Terrace Tucker Drive. The applicant is Claudia Sweeney, Executive Director, Torrington Housing Authority. The proposal is a five-year extension to the previously approved site plan application. If you guys remember this, this was done quite a while ago, and now we have a housekeeping issue, and that is that we have to formally approve, after they formally request, an extension for five years. So Jeremy can fill us in on that.
Yep, so the way that, I'm paraphrasing the statute, but the way the statute reads is if there's no significant changes to the, to the previously approved plans, we're, with a request, we're obligated to grant the extension unless there's some sort of extenuating circumstances. It's nothing really extenuating here. So I'll just read, if you don't mind, I'll just read Claudia's email, I mean, her letter in.
Diane, second.
You two, second.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just read, I'll just quickly read this in. Regarding site plan approval number 1345, Slavy Village. Dear Mr. Leifert, as you aware, as you are aware, the planning and zoning approval for Slavy Village, number 1345, is due to expire in October 2025. The Torrington Housing Authority is requesting an extension of approval for five years at, as it is a project the authority still wishes to complete. Your assistance in this matter is appreciated. Should you require additional information, please feel free to contact me. Very truly yours, Claudia Sweeney, Executive Director.
Okay. Commissioners have any questions of Jeremy on this particular issue?
What is?
Do you remember it? I think part of it was VA, I think part of it was a VA thing.
So what is it, what is it that, in regards to the site plan, that's not completed?
None of it's been started.
Nothing started.
It's not, not been started, so our site plans are only, our site plan approvals are only valid for five years.
Yeah.
But the statute allows us to extend them up to 10 years.
Right.
Up to five additional years.
So this, this was due to expire in October, and she's coming, coming in now to get it extended.
Because they want to build more.
They still, they still want to do the project.
They want the project done, but they just aren't.
Absolutely, nothing's been done for the project.
Okay. We haven't seen plans ever, so.
Yeah, I mean, since the original.
Since the original approval, right.
So the, so the site plan itself would just be continued, the approval would just be continued for five more years.
Right.
Based, from the, from the previous approval.
And they haven't changed anything on that site?
No.
No, so we, when we get to these, when we get to projects that are, it's, this isn't a typical situation where, where something doesn't get done in five years, and it still wants to get done.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't run into that, that often, so we have to get a formal written request to actually grant the extension. The commission has the power to grant extensions for any length of time after, we could do it one year, three years, five years, but I don't see any, any reason not to extend this one for five years.
I agree.
So the commission just needs to do a formal motion to grant the five-year extension?
So I'm gonna ask for a motion that, that for Site Plan 1345 Cory Terrace Tucker Drive, that we approve a five-year extension from the previously approved site plan application.
I'll second.
Don't move.
So Donna, who made the motion?
You were, you were asking for a motion.
I was asking for a motion.
Donna's got the sheet.
Okay, she don't read the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to grant a five-year extension of previously approved site plan 1345 for applicant Claudia Sweeney, Executive Director of Torrington Housing Authority, for location 49 and 71 Tucker Drive. Now we can.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, it's done. Thank you. Okay, moving on to 6B. Subdivision, sub-25-1, location 660 Torrington Street. The applicant is William Clark. The proposal is a re-subdivision on a vacant land into two building lots. We need to set a public hearing date. The hearing date suggestion is 9/10, so I need a motion to, to.
I'll make a motion to set that public hearing in September 10.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, pass, that's it, 9/10. I think now is appropriate time, maybe we talk about, I mean, let me insert, because we have decided on 9/10 as a public hearing date.
Yeah.
Let's talk about the fact that we're changing the normal scheduled dates for the September 17th is being moved to the 10th. Okay, so, so for all of you commissioners, in the September 17th scheduled meeting for Planning and Zoning is, is being canceled, and in replacement, it will be 9/10. Okay? Okay.
Yeah, and I already, I already booked, I made sure this room, that the council chambers was available, so we're all set.
Right. And you'll get a packet, as you normally do, so it'll be a sort of a reminder.
The only difference is that'll be, that'll be scheduled as a special meeting, so we can't, once we post the agenda, we can't add anything to it.
Yeah.
So the agenda just has to stay as is, once it's posted.
And that's gonna be the only meeting for September?
Yeah, it's just, I'm, you know, for the record, I'm on vacation, so.
I was too.
There you go.
Okay. All right, so going on to 6C. 6C is Site Plan number 15678. The location is 692 South Main Street. The applicant is Anthony Pataglia. The proposal is update site plan 464. The situation here is that the site plan has not been updated, we don't have anything to really work with. So what I'm asking is for our motion to table this to the next meeting, or just, do we need a motion?
Yeah, yeah, we do, I'm just, I'll just add that, this used to be Berkshire Auto Sales, and they, they moved down, down South Main Street, so this was vacant, and these are new, these are new owners, and they're, they're slightly tweaking some things with the site plan. It's not vastly different, but enough to get a review done.
Yep.
They were, they were a little late getting us the information, so not enough time to turn it around.
Okay, so we need a motion to table it till next meeting.
Table until the September?
Yep.
September 10th.
Yep.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Moving on, we're getting to number seven, correspondence. So you have the zoning and BLIT violation report. I don't know if you have any questions on that, but Jeremy's here and could probably help, because he's on the BLIT committee. So if you have questions, Jeremy's ready to talk.
I have it, my packet only.
You don't have it?
My packet only had the minutes.
Okay.
Previous.
Well, you know, and as always, if, if you notice something on this report that you just want to talk about at any point, just send, send Nate or I an email, or just give us a call, unless, unless anything is pressing right now. It is, it is moving. Yeah. Yep. It is, it is moving.
That's something he would just tell me about, yeah.
Yep. Yep, I just don't want to, it's, it's a little bit of a legal discussion, that, that, I can update you on individually.
Okay.
Oh yeah, it's, it's, it is not stagnant.
Okay, moving on to 7B. So we have some administrative determinations that Jeremy wants to go over. These are, these are decisions that are in the purview of his position, but he feels it's very important that he keep the board informed, so Jeremy, go ahead and tell us what.
Yeah, this, this, these used to be on the agenda, and they fell off for a long time. I just thought, I thought it's, I think it's important that we loop the commission in on, on things we're doing in the office between meetings. So 1447 New Litchfield, this is the, there was a vacant space next to the Townline Liquor. You picture that building, the Townline Liquor's on one side, and the whole other side of the building was vacant. There's a realtor that moved in there, and there's a, there's a new sign that was over 32 square feet, so that requires site plan approval. Those are usually always done in-house, unless they're part of a larger site plan that we have to look at. If it's just the sign, it's always City Planner. So there's that one, 100 Lawton Street, the minor modifications, you, everybody will remember that one, that was, that was the, the indoor market that came in.
Oh, yeah.
Last fall, I think.
Yeah.
There was, so they had to put a handicap ramp in the rear of the building, and there was, there was two handicap spaces there that were kind of, they were parallel against the building, and something didn't work out right, because they had one, they had one van-accessible handicap space and one normal handicap space. They, they basically just had to flip-flop them, so I did that as a, as a minor, minor modification.
That project took off.
Yeah.
They're pretty full, aren't they?
Go in, go in there, it's really nice.
Well, actually, I know some people that are going to be vendors there, and it sounds tremendous.
Where is it, give me another.
It is the DuckDuck Building. You go on up, you go on, just to, you go in right at the end of Lawton Street.
I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah, the old Turner.
Oh, the old Turner Seymour.
Yeah, so right where that new, that new storage places on, on South Main, just turn in right there.
It's vendors that sell their wares, it's not real, I mean, it's not antiques and things like that unless you repurpose them, or whatever, but they're, they're full.
Crafty, yeah.
Yeah.
And they're permanent, they go in, they set up, and they just stay set up.
They rent the space, and it's all set up.
It's really nice in there, they got a little, they got a little coffee bar when you walk in to sit, to sit around and do work if you wanted to.
Go down there and take it out.
Yeah.
He wants to, he wants to also open up the second, I guess it'd be the second or the third floor for artists to actually come in and do their work there.
So, so behind kind of the regular, behind the regular craft area too, there's more, it's got more, there's like one room for like artsy-type things, and there's another room for more industrial work in small spaces.
Right.
So it was, it was exactly what we wrote that small manufacturing.
Yeah.
Ordinate, yeah, regulation for. So this is exactly what we're, what I know Marty was thinking when, when we, when we wrote that. It, it's, you know, especially for the manufact, the small manufacturing stations, the hope is you, you get in there, you get a good product going, and you, and you move, it takes off, and you move into a larger space. Yeah.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah.
And now hopefully that larger space is here.
Yeah, hopefully.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
A lineup.
Yeah.
They, they did a nice tribute to the Turner and Seymour Foundry too.
Yeah.
Into the country, they have some really old pictures.
Yeah, that's nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna check it out myself too. I think they opened this last weekend officially, yeah.
Yeah, they had a soft opening, but yeah. So, I mean, bottom line, it was just flip-flopping two, two parking spaces in the back of the building, so. And then the last one is 1927 East Main. This is Spirit Halloween going into the old Ocean, I mean, not Ocean State, Big Lots building.
Okay.
So they, they, this is to put their, they were to remove the Big Lots sign and put the temporary, like, it's, it's a fab, it's, you know, it's a fabric sign they put up.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
So, so that'll be probably up and down by the beginning of November.
Yeah, right. Okay.
Halloween candy is in the stores, that's for sure.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, so we don't normally do this, but anybody have any good for the order? If you want to say something to anything? No other issue?
Yeah.
Thanks, yeah. Okay, thank you.
So this is a new day, we do, we just, we're doing new things with Greg at the helm.